Wednesday, August fifteenth. Town of Titan Planning Board. Called order. Reminder that the meeting is video and audio recorded for best posterity. If y'all please rise for the ladies, appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Okay, first item on the agenda is ISM Solar LLC Extension Request. Here's a letter to the Titan Planning Board. ISM Solar, Titan Three LLC requests an extension for special permit filed on September seventh, twenty seventeen, titled, "Special Permit for Ground-Mounted Solar Photovoltaic Installation. We seek a one-year extension due to continued delays at the state level to implement the new solar program SMART, that is Source, Massachusetts Renewable Target. The program is awaiting final approval by the Department of Public Utilities and expected to launch this fall at an unspecified date. Our project will require enrollment in SMART to secure financing and execute contracts. Therefore, we cannot pull a building permit and break ground until the program is underway. Please place this attention on the August fifteenth, twenty eighteen Planning Board Meeting Agenda. Please let us know if any further information is required to proceed with this extension." Any questions, comments from the board?
Well, we went around with this, Carrie and I, and I think it's really not for the special permit. It's for the site plan. Six of one, half dozen the other, so.
Is the site plan though?
The site plan is good for a year.
Okay, I see.
So do we want to get? I don't think we need to get picky. I mean, we know the intent.
Yeah, I think we can just make a motion to extend the special permit and the site plan.
There you go. That covers it, good. I'll make that motion.
Uh, wait, any comments from the?
No.
I would just say Attorney Robert Frederick, I'm here for ISM. With me is Mr. Lucini. If you have any questions, we just wanted to.
Okay. Okay?
I will second that motion.
All the papers?
Aye.
Alright. There you go.
Thank you.
Are they gonna extend it for a time period?
Oh.
Sorry.
One more year?
The request was one year.
But one year, that's right, I'm sorry.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a special permit for Arthur and Bernie Miranda at Zero Elm Street, map twenty-three lot fifteen point one.
Six fifteen, so.
Oh, six fifteen, okay. We will stand by. Tell everybody, be here.
I know.
That's what happens when you start putting times.
Uh, here you go, they come?
Um, they'll be here at six fifteen.
Could we move on some more?
And then Attorney Zay Jack is gonna be here representing, um.
I thought he sold that.
Twenty acres.
That's for the sign modification.
For the sign modification and the extension over. So if you wanted to go over the marijuana bylaws.
Sure, why not? And that is related to the hundred-foot setback?
Correct.
So we have a potential applicant who wants to appear at our next meeting on September fifth. And he's interested in the building at two hundred Williams Street. The problem is, is two hundred, the back of the building does not meet the hundred-foot requirement for the setback to a residential area. So, and after speaking with Attorney Jay Tullman on how we could rectify the situation, he gave us two options. One is they can go to the ZBA for a variance or go to town meeting to change the setback under the zoning bylaw. So I just thought I would bring this to your attention before we have a meeting with the, I think it is one connection is going to be appearing with a little presentation for you guys at our September fifth meeting. Um, and he's aware of the issue on this. So I just wanted to put the notice out there and if you guys wanted to discuss, I'd kind of like to move forward with that. Kind of put a bug in your ear to let you know, um.
Did you speak to Jay about it or just emailed?
It was the email, which I have included in your folder.
And he says, "In that case, I'd recommend including a provision allowing waiver of setback." I assume that he means in the bylaw amendment going toward town meeting.
Yes, that was my understanding of how, um.
And how many feet is it?
You're required to have a hundred feet.
No, no, is the house nine feet or ninety feet?
It's, the house is actually a significant amount away. If you look at the.
The house is three hundred, the house is three hundred and ninety feet away.
So if you look here, here's the building that they want to utilize.
Yep.
This is the residential property right here, so it's right here. The house is right here.
There is no house on this property.
On this one?
Where?
No, this one does not have. As you can see, it on this one, right here, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is the one in question.
This one.
This is zero.
So this corner.
Yeah, right there. It's probably like twenty, thirty feet. I just did some research on this today because I spoke with Mallory.
So we probably should've worded the bylaw as a physical residence, not a residential district?
I'm not sure the state would buy that.
Yeah.
Right. In a way, I'd be not in favor of changing the stat setback and letting them go to the ZBA. If another development ever comes up and we establish another marijuana zone, that could come up again.
There is a residence right here.
A hundred foot is not a long way.
The proximity to that residence is almost four hundred feet.
So there's not, that's not a house.
There is, there is not, there are no buildings on this property which is known as Zero Wellington. So seeking a variance, I think they'd have a good chance because there's no dwelling on that land.
Yeah, I don't think they'd get much flack from the neighbors.
And this is the house that we didn't even know was a house, the one that's back in the bushes?
And it's my understanding that, I can't remember who it was, but there was someone who had spoken to the property owner of the residential district. The house is vacant right now, there's no one in there. But the property owner claimed that he didn't have an issue with it, um.
But do you know the other gentleman down, further down the farm? Who's show up?
I think it should go to ZBA just so we don't set precedent.
I think you're right.
Since there are no dwellings on this property and the closest one is four hundred feet. This is business zone, so it's not an issue.
Right.
I think when we did this, we overlooked the fact that Wellington Street properties. But, yeah, as a matter of fact, I spoke with Mallory today on this and did a whole lot of research on that. I would agree with Woody. I don't think we should, uh.
Change it?
Yeah, not at a town meeting. If we can grant the waiver.
That's what the ZBA does.
The ZBA sounds better.
Grant the variance.
Yeah.
Put it on it.
So they're coming before us on September fifth?
September fifth, just to talk to you guys, to let you know what their intent is. Um, I, I don't remember what exactly they were looking to do.
Instead of waiting, I think we ought to just tell them they should go file for a variance.
Yeah. And it may actually be helpful if one of us was to attend that meeting to try to help them out.
Yeah, well, they're, it's not gonna be for six weeks, the way, the way hearings and notices and all those things turn. So they may want to, they will have to get site plan approval from us. So maybe they want to come before us on September fifth to talk about site plan. I don't know if that's putting the cart before the horse, but if you could tell them what we've discussed and then if they still want to come and give us their presentation, then we'll be here for them. This is the extension for the solar.
We have about two minutes if you want to vote to approve the meeting minutes. We'll get that out of the way.
Okay.
Motion to approve the minutes of July eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and July twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Carry, just keep the meeting moving.
That's right.
You're welcome.
All the paper?
Aye.
Okay.
I'll bring a whip next time.
So, do we need to sign both of them or is one or not?
One should be enough.
Okay. I hope so.
Yeah.
Both of them, yes.
Yeah.
We got another minute, so I want, I want to just recognize Carrie for the job she's doing in this office. And she pulled all the plans out of there that thirty, forty years old and some of the old ones have like eight copies and it's just they've been categorized and she's making a spreadsheet form so we can finally get this office and order the way it should be. So you're doing a great job, Carrie, thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you. It still hasn't found Wellington, but thank you for bringing the copy.
Okay, at six fifteen, good use of a minute.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is the special permit for Arthur and Bernie Miranda at Zero Elm Street, map twenty-three lot fifteen point one. Here's the notice of public hearing, Titan Planning Board, Town Hall Lower Level, Notice of Public Hearing, August fifteenth, twenty eighteen, at six fifteen PM. Notice hereby given, the Titan Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on the special permit application by Arthur and Bernie Miranda for approval of the creation of two retreat lots located at Zero Elm Street being shown as recessors, map twenty-three, lot fifteen point one, pursuant to sections five zero nine zero and five three zero zero of the Town of Titan zoning bylaws. All interested persons should attend the hearing. Copies of the plan are available for inspection in the planning office in the selectmen's meeting room, nine seventy-nine, Somerset Avenue, Mass. So. And, that's yours?
What's that?
Who was the applicant? Step right up. So, is?
This is the driveway for the first lot.
Now, is this, was this the original lot or was, is this the original?
No.
Okay, so, so it's not, this is not a new lot turned in? This is not three lots from last?
That was done a long time, part of where I was building this. So this here will be the first house lot. We already picked it and then driveway will come up back for the second lot and that's already picked. One lot is, contains a little more than eight acres and then the other one's approximately probably ten acres.
Did you receive the fire chief's comments?
I just got those today.
Okay.
So if you want to read those into rec.
Uh, this is from the fire chief today at three o'clock. Carrie, I will require that all radius in the driveways be a minimum of twenty-five feet. Also, the turnarounds as shown are not deep enough. The twenty-four feet in width is more than adequate. However, I will need a fifty-foot depth at a minimum in both driveways. Radiuses will apply to any turns of the driveway and where the turnaround meet driveway. Also not shown is the twenty-foot clear vegetation. It shows twelve driveway material, which is fine. Just need four feet of clear vegetation on each side of the driveway to make the twenty feet.
Okay, so that'll be part of this.
So what we have asked in the past of other applicants is that on either side of the twelve-foot driveway, there be a four-foot stone. So that, I mean, it could, it.
A hard base for, case of trucks.
Well, yeah, some like two-inch stone, two stone, whatever. Now, have you looked at this?
No, I don't think we have seen that one.
Okay, so I don't know, do the radiuses meet?
For the turnarounds? There, uh, the fire chief did come in and take a look at the plans and he said he was okay with that. He did mention that this part here, I believe.
He wants it to be deeper.
I think, yes, he wants to go deeper.
Yeah.
So he wanted to move these a little bit more to give it more.
So that, that can become part of.
You should take this?
Yeah. That can become part of the.
I think my preference would be to have you revise it and come back with it or before we vote on it. Because having it on the plan.
I wish he would've come a little earlier.
Well, it was three o'clock today.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, this has been here for quite a while, so I wish he would've come in a little. That way I could have bought the engineers to go down and get it back.
There's some other issues too, Mr. Miranda, that was brought up by our health agent who did the care tests out there. We're, this property is a stream that runs over here and it was his opinion there were wetlands in there.
Where?
Right around over here, in this area.
Yeah, that's a reason.
But the property, the property wasn't flagged. We've sent copies to the Conservation Commission, Commission.
Yeah, I think.
To get their comments. But the property hasn't been flagged by a botanist yet for wetlands. So if this is wetlands up here, it may have an impact on the buffers, buffer going here. You know, to the septic system, pro septic. You know, I don't know, they, they should be flagged, I would seem to think. And, what do you, there's a big boulder right here.
Yeah, we just moved that stuff.
You wanna move it or blast it?
Move it, blast it, whatever.
All right, um.
Yeah.
Now, we already have a problem over here in our highways superintendent's here and he's gonna probably discuss this with you. There's already a problem with water coming down here. It goes into the street and it freezes and whatnot.
There's a drain right in the front there. Town has a drain there.
Yes. I, we're gonna be looking for drainage calculations and what your plan, what your plan is going through here as far as.
Stone driveway.
In the middle?
No, this'll be a stone driveway, that'll be a stone driveway.
Oh, it's all gonna be stone, it's all gonna be permeable?
This'll be grass, yeah.
So there will never be a paved driveway, is that, are those stipulations?
Somebody buys it ten years, twenty years, some, I don't know what they're gonna do with it.
Well, yeah, but I mean, we can put stipulations on there that it has to remain as.
Entirely up to you. It's entirely up to you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think they could do it with grading, now's the time to discuss it.
Grading.
Great, when it's built and when it's passed on. The water's gonna get into the ditch.
Into that drain, yeah.
There's a ditch that goes across.
Right.
There's, well, these driveways are gonna be crossing a ditch, so obviously you're gonna need a pipe under both driveways or one pipe under the two.
There's already a pipe that goes across there, right? Goes from.
Yeah, that would have to be replaced, it's, it's not gonna handle this. And we, we want to get the water off the driveway before it gets to the road so it's allowed to get into that ditch.
Okay, so we just grade it off so it goes off to the side?
Yeah, some type of language is gonna be there to follow the deeds, whether you build it or it's revising.
Just to grade it or, you want, you want to grade it off so the water goes to the side and into that drain? It's there now.
It can't, we can't eliminate the ditch because each year, water in the end is different areas it comes out with different spots.
That's been there forever.
Yeah.
What if we have a stipulation on there that our engineer has to review this and do all, you know, have all the calculations reviewed by our engineer before we actually vote on it? I don't know how you guys feel.
I mean, that's, that, that drain has been there for, matter of fact, you people have put some new drainage up on the other end, but that drainage pipe has been there for, forever.
Yes, I'm talking about we want to catch the water so it doesn't get in the street.
Right, so you want me to, you want me to grade it so the water goes into that drain?
Into that ditch?
Yeah.
The problem we have, as you know, we're working, most of the soils around here are above ledge so they can't saturate and it's, most of that driveway is all the way to the road.
Yeah, so, so you want this dry, you want this pitching this way to get, there's a, there's like a culvert here that goes across the street.
Yeah, so that there's, there's a ditch that runs parallel with that stone wall in front of the property.
Right.
Along the road.
So across here, if, if we dug down, you know, maybe two, three feet and put a, a three-inch minus in it, so when the water comes out, it goes in there and then into the drain before it even goes out to the street.
Yes, and, and the driveway's graded to shed the water.
That's right, that stops the water from going up, yeah.
Yeah, with the pipe under the two driveways also.
Yeah.
At least twelve inch.
So you want, you want us to replace this pipe here? Okay, so how about this one all the way? Is he gonna replace this so I can?
There'll be a ditch remaining between yours and Brett's.
Okay.
Like I was saying, we can't fill the ditch because the water meanders there, so you gotta allow it to get in there.
Okay, so where do you want, like a twelve-inch pipe?
At least a twelve-inch pipe, yeah. It's probably, the driveways being so close, it looks like it's, makes sense to be one pipe under both.
Yeah, more right across, okay. So twelve-inch, the black plastic?
Do you have a plan down there?
Probably get a plastic.
Should be looking at, put a cover on it, yeah, plastic's fine.
I think the engineer shows her.
Will I give him the, find he's here?
It's here, I saw it, you can look at it.
They should submit plans to him of what they're gonna do and I should review it.
We haven't said a review yet for. Yeah. It's just running down here. As if you recall, they were looking for five hundred two.
Yeah, at one point, you should, especially since. So you just have a little drainage swail up along the street? Yes. One of the two driveways.
You gotta talk very, that's, you gotta talk very, that's good.
Yeah, so if I go across twelve inch pipe and then I put maybe a foot or so of range minus, I pop it, so when the water comes down, it doesn't breach, it goes into the stone and then into this culvert.
Yeah, that would help any, anyone missed the driveway, yes, yeah. It's gonna be out on the street. Yeah, his work's gonna be involved, yeah, it's gotta be yours, so you want it. So some, during the winters, I don't know if it's a surveyor or you guys, they just went in there and just.
The hunters, the hunters were running out of there.
Just the muddy ruts over the winter, it just followed right out.
Yeah, see, that used to be all, all grass and they went in there hunting, you know?
Yeah, diet hunters. That's, that's my piece.
So we'd like all that shown on the plan and obviously you can't do it all right here. So between the fire chief and the drainage. Any comments from the, anyone?
I don't know, can I add a little bit more to the, now it shows the, I don't know if there's wetlands there or not because it wasn't flagged, but it should show the uplands and wetlands.
Yeah, there's wetland way, way back here.
Yeah, it may run down to here, so I don't know. It really ought to be flagged. I, I think the Conservation Commission would want that anyway.
All right, you want me to talk to Conservation, see what they want?
Well, we're waiting for the comments, but you probably should talk to them. Yeah. My other thing, nothing prohibits this, and our bylaws unfortunately, but we're gonna probably come up with something. Can this house be changed to go like over here so it's not thirty feet from behind?
To be pushed this way, you mean?
Yeah, can it go like this? Oops. Something like this.
Well, you want the front of the house facing this, you don't want the front of the house facing somebody's backyard.
Well, it are.
Or the back of the house.
Either way, it's gonna face it.
How far you want, we're, we're supposed to be fifteen feet from the property line.
Yeah.
It's thirty, we double it.
Exactly. Which isn't a whole lot. Now, this looks like the owner of LaPage, are they here? Do they own that property?
Yeah, no.
I am told they no longer own that, it's actually, um.
You gotta admit, thirty feet's not a whole lot in somebody's backyard, but I understand.
Yeah, they would say fifteen, so we, we doubled it, we went thirty.
The new, the new owner of LaPage is Kevin Preitz.
Yes, we could probably move, we could probably move this up and over another.
Yeah, because.
Another ten feet.
We could also put a condition on that you put some kind of shrubbery over here.
Unless it's already wooded, then.
Yeah, there's an old, there's an old stone wall here, this is all stone wall all around.
Yeah, okay.
There's an old stone wall here, there's trees and all in here.
Okay.
What if we say that you can't cut the first fifteen feet and move the rest of it?
Okay.
Yeah, that's why we doubled it.
So there's a possibility you could turn that.
We can move, we can move, well, instead of ten, we just move this ten feet and move forward a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So these are all tree lines, basically?
I don't know what that is.
So, um, if you could show on the.
That's all, this is all wooded.
Yeah, if you could show on the revised plan, a tree line or a no, do not disturb line, that would be.
Maybe ten feet, do not disturb.
Yeah, maybe even twenty, if that's thirty. Just so that the trees stay there and they, they maintain their privacy.
Yeah, we're trying to make everybody happy, so, you know, that.
All right, that was.
Okay, so I'll give this to the, um, to the engineer now. Do you have something you want me to give them or you just want me to, to put in the twelve-inch pipe?
Your, your next payment should show the work that you want to do on him property up front.
Yeah, but I, I want to do it once, I don't want to do it, you come in and say, well, I want, then I gotta go back.
You know it's a twelve-inch pipe?
It's a twelve-inch pipe.
You want the water to go in the ditch.
And we're gonna, the water going into that ditch and you want the stone so it stops the water from going out to the street.
Yeah.
And you're gonna flag the wetlands, right?
We'll get the wetland flagged.
Okay. If there are wetlands.
Yeah, I don't think there, there are, but the wetlands.
Well, I've noticed it on, on GIS, yeah.
Yeah, they're way back here.
You know, if it runs down into here, now we're pushing.
Yeah, no, this here, this here, where the nature field gone, is about ten to fifteen feet higher than this.
Okay. Yeah, well, that's the, that's the information we gotta know before we make a decision.
I'll talk to Conservation, yeah.
So would anyone like to make a motion to continue public hearing?
I have a question.
Oh, yes.
My name is Dean Robertire, I live directly across the street from where this project's gonna be, where the driveway is. I have three culverts in my yard that drain under my property. One of them is for the old LaPage property, which doesn't affect my backyard. But there are also two culverts on the property that drain to my backyard, they come up from that driveway.
Across the street?
Directly across the street, there's two. I can show you in a map if you'd like. Um, one of them is in disrepair, one more that's pretty good. But once you stop putting the rocks in and increase the volume, it's gonna go underground. It's not gonna go into the street and it's gonna flood my backyard. And in the springtime, I can't mow part of my backyard because of the water. And it, it dries out during the summertime, but I mean, if you can increase the volume, once you've messed with mother nature and the topography of that land, it's all ledge. It's got no place to go but my backyard. And I've, I've been there for twenty-four years.
Those culverts have been there.
I know the property very well, I've been there for twenty-four years.
Yeah, those culverts have been there for fifty years or more.
And one of them is in disrepair and one of them drains directly onto my property and it floods it. Well, if you get a heavy main store, now, the LaPage property, they had to have stipulations on their deed because of the drainage.
Are you twenty-eight, thirty-nine? Are you twenty-eight, thirty-nine?
Twenty-eight, thirty-nine, Dean Robertire.
Yeah, the drainage.
And if they put, like they were talking about with the stipulation, if they pave, pave, pave that road, it's just gonna make a total mess of both land on both sides and my property with the drainage because the slope of the land, they could probably grade it, but it's still gonna run onto my property no matter what you do.
It's not gonna be paved.
Well, I, you know, that makes sense, but I mean, like you said, if down the line if they do.
We can make a, a condition that it never be paved as part of the permit.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense.
This can be paved back here, but, you know, maybe a hundred feet back or something, no, no paving. But I mean, if they want to pave this, I'm sure.
Yeah, they're gonna want to pave where they're, where they're parking.
Can I show you where it is? My property.
They're right, they're right here.
Okay. This, okay, right here, this is my driveway, my house, and this is right here, this drainage pipe and this is the road here, so it's probably right here. And all this, those two culverts drain into this part of my property here and it floods it.
Your property's pretty low here.
Yeah, it is.
It goes way down, yeah.
It is, it is. And it, it kind of raises up in the back where I have my vegetable garden, but right here, it's, it's the low land, the lowest part, and it floods every year, floods every year. And like I said, it dries out, but once you increase the, the water volume going in there and it's all ledge, all up and, up, up in here, it's just gonna go into the road, like where the LaPage property is.
It's just gonna go into the road, like where the, the, the Page property is.
Yeah, so if we put stone back to here, then you're not gonna increase.
Yeah, a couple hundred feet.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's slow gradual grade down, if you look, if you straighten it out a little bit here, and it'll drain off, but then you're gonna drain off into these properties now, right? Um, right about here, there's a pond under LaPage, the old LaPage property.
Yeah, there's something there.
Yeah, it's, I, I think it was a manmade years ago.
No, yeah, the guy that owned this, he done some excavation, he never, he never backfilled it, yeah.
Right, I saw that. Right. But that's, that is.
And she, there's a drain that comes through here.
Yeah, on the other side of the, huge drain.
Huge drain, there's about a three foot that comes through here and comes right out.
And it comes out right, the drainage is right here on my property, and it comes, it goes here, but it goes up into the woods.
Yeah. Yeah, so when they built this house, they were, they made them put this drain in here and come out there.
They had to, it was, it was a stream, every time you get a flash flood. But this part, this drain here comes out, goes into the woods. This here and here goes directly under my property. Now, if you pave this, or change the topography of the land at all, it's gonna, it's gonna flood.
But we're not gonna pave, we're not paving this a couple hundred feet back, and we're not changing the topography.
Right.
Matter of fact, we're gonna put stone there to stop that water.
From this corner to here is two hundred ninety feet, so we'll probably make it three hundred feet.
Yeah. That's okay. And that'll, that'll stop any water from coming out and going across. But you're always gonna get water into that. Cause the water that comes off their property comes into this drain, it, it doesn't go that. The water that goes here comes out of here.
Comes here and goes down to this drain.
That's right, the water that comes off their property comes into this little culvert over here.
Yeah, there's one culvert, right at the edge here, and there's another one, you know, right here. And it'll, it'll flood.
You're gonna grade towards the center anyway, right?
Yeah.
Like we said.
To the center.
Yeah, we're gonna raise this to the center, and we're gonna leave this grass, so you don't get no.
Now, the driveway on the, on the plan says tw- on here, it said twenty feet?
Twelve.
Twelve.
According to fire standards, the driveway has to be twenty feet going in.
Okay.
But it's stone.
Yeah, but it doesn't have to be totally twenty feet.
Twenty feet, then you.
It could be stone or, uh, grass.
Hard, hard packed material.
And you need twenty feet buffer zone here, this end, this has to be cut?
No, no.
No, no, no.
The overall width, the overall width.
Overall width.
Of the driveway, or hard packed material, so that vehicles, hard, you know, trucks and stuff can go in, the overall is twenty feet. If we were to allow twelve foot driveway, the, that's the only thing that we would require, but we're not gonna allow the twelve foot to be paved. So you're gonna end up with twenty feet of stone driveway. For the first two hundred, three hundred.
Three hundred.
Which will hold back the water.
I'm just really, really concerned about the drainage.
Yeah, you, you know, when you get a lot of water, was when they went in there, they made these big ruts with the trucks.
Yeah.
So a lot of water.
Well, you had some guy come in in the springtime and he, he, he leveled it and put some dirt down, which stopped, which stopped.
Yeah. Which stopped it, that's right.
A little bit, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. We, when we did the pit test, I had him come back in, put gravel here to stop that from coming out.
Mm-hmm. But even the, even the, the drain is, it's there right now, it doesn't do a proper job, it's just, it does no proper job.
Well, the only, the, this is, this is a very, this isn't even a drain, this is a gutter.
Yeah.
That goes into that.
It's all overgrown.
Yeah, so what we're gonna do, we're gonna put a twelve inch pipe across here to pick up the water, it's made to go across, you want, the, the street department wants that.
Yep.
Then on top of that pipe, we're gonna put stone, so when the water comes out, it doesn't go out on the street, it goes into that stone.
Into the stone, and then when, well, see, what my concern is, once it goes into stone, and this is all ledge, it's gonna seep underneath here and go into this property here.
Well, it's always, it's been going there for.
Well, then it's, then when, once you, once you fix the problem with the drainage, it's gonna increase the flow of water into my backyard. What do you think, Doc?
But with the, because of the amount of stone going over the driveway, they're not gonna stop, I keep hearing they're gonna stop, it's gonna slow it down.
No, it's gonna. Slow it down.
Allow the ground to saturate as much as it can.
Right.
Yeah.
They're not gonna increase water, it's just, they're gonna channel the water.
Okay.
And slow it down as much as they can.
They, they can increase the water that's coming out.
Okay, asphalt will be detrimental.
Yeah, we're not gonna put asphalt, no.
Okay. And like I said, that pond is right here too, and I don't know if there's a hundred, hundred foot no touch zone from here, I mean, it's the conservation.
Well, this is why we want the property flagged, to see what's what out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, because this lane has been there for a hundred years.
All the hunters went up there, they've been doing it for, for eons, yeah, yeah.
For a hundred years, it's been there, that, that lane.
But what you're saying is you potentially could need an order of conditions because of this, this pond.
Right.
So you may need to submit, to, you ask conservation if you need to submit a request for determination of applicability.
Yeah.
To decide if they want you to submit an notice of intent to get an order of conditions.
Yeah, because as long as, yeah, and that. Shouldn't be a problem, because as long as we're not asphalt and anything, we're not changing, you know, like when they, when they put this asphalt in here. And they wanted to continue this driveway out, they had to bring this driveway all the way down and out to here.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're not putting any asphalt in here at all. So we're not changing anything. Like if we're gonna put a road through here with asphalt in there, then that's a, a whole different ballgame.
Right.
But I, I'll be talking to conservation commission.
Okay, because I know this pond here, and the, and this property right here was like sixty-five feet. And I always thought it was a hundred foot no touch zone, but that's up to the conservation.
Well, there's a hundred foot buffer zone, but then you can fire the, go into the buffer, yeah.
It was a thirty-five, yeah.
Right, right.
That may be a non-jurisdictional wetland.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
That's something that conservation will have to answer.
Right.
And then, I mean, the same thing with you brought up with the house that's here, it's awfully close to this house here, but that's, that's up to that.
Because they're probably fifty or sixty feet away, we're another thirty, and we're going ten, so they're, they're like a hundred feet away.
Yeah.
Most, most of the houses indicted are fifteen foot from the property line.
Yeah.
So most of the houses are thirty feet away from each other.
See, that's why we all want houses out, this area here to get away from all that.
I'm talking to you in this area here, and all your new developments, they're all thirty feet apart, so I mean, that's.
Yeah, yeah, oh, no, I understand, yeah. Oh, yeah, it's, it's.
That's the rules that the town has, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Well, those are the concerns that I have.
Alright.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll get that back to the engineers tomorrow.
Well, we have, we may have some other, maybe other questions or comments?
I wanna know, so we're next door at two eight two two, so our well is on that side. So how will that affect that, and also, um, the stone wall at the front?
Yeah.
I know some of the stone wall is also on that property, so is my stone wall gonna be ruined from that?
If the stone wall, if it's on your property, the stone wall, we can't touch that.
Right, but in the same hand, I'm our husband, Brett, two eight two two Elm Street.
Yeah.
Um. You'll end up with the stuff that's right down the road in Somerset, where that guy developed that farm, where he just grabs a hold of the end of the stone wall with the excavator, and it's just open faced.
He took it, he took the wall out.
Right, but, where, right, but I'm just giving you an example, okay? I don't wanna show up in the corner of my property with now a stone wall that has walls coming in, coming out, pieces of a puzzle. Because you now removed a section of stone.
Well, if I wanna put a driveway going in and it's twenty foot wide, I'm gonna take out twenty foot of wall that's on my property.
Right.
Not your property.
But your rocks may very well interlock with my rocks, is what I'm saying.
No, because I have to, no, cause I'm, I'm gonna stay away from your property, probably maybe five feet away from your property. Then I take that wall off and just put it straight, face down.
Okay, actually, it's more than that.
Oh, yeah, I'm not gonna.
It's understandable, but what I'm saying is I don't want three rocks hanging out, one hanging back, four rocks hanging out, five hanging back.
No, 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 no. I don't want, I don't want that either, cause I want, I wanna sell a lot.
I'm very, I'm taking this about my stone wall, it's a beautiful stone wall.
Yeah.
And the other side will be rebuilt at some point when I get the time, but.
Yeah, right.
You know what I'm thinking, Bernie?
Yeah.
There's twenty feet right here anyway, between what you have. If you make all of this grass. And it's, that's at least the other four feet, so now you've got, you have enough room. Two areas going up, if you leave that grass, that should satisfy the fire department. Of a twenty foot wide.
Oh, yeah, we're not taking this grass out. No, no, no.
Okay, so, you know, if you clear it, and it's gonna be grass.
Yeah. It's gonna be grass, no.
Then that should satisfy the fire department.
Yeah, we're not taking that out. And your wall, we're not gonna leave it jagged, no. And it's not, the wall that I take out will be on my property, so even if it's three or four feet in on my property, it'll be a three.
Right, so whatever he needs to do, this is probably at least eight feet either way.
Yeah, so that's still the same four feet that's needed on this side plus four feet with the proper door in this here.
Well, he can have eight feet, and eight feet, which gives him the twenty.
Yeah.
Then it'll be all grass.
Be all grass.
And I actually, not to be coming up again, but I'm very interested in seeing the blindness go through there, because in that front corner, by that.
Sure.
In this front corner right here, this is our lot here. This corner.
There's a drain.
Yes, the drain is roughly about here, heads across the street.
There's another one here that goes across the street, yeah.
There's a giant ditch right about here next to a telephone pole that goes across the street. That one, I can attest to, this gentleman is in very dire disrepair. I've gone out there and actually tried to do my best to help aid the water flow, but not too much to affect this gentleman, because I know what's going on. But this area, right about here.
You think that's what?
For the past four years that I've lived there, every year, there are jack-in-the-pool-pit flowers. Now, I don't know, the jack-in-the-pool-pit is still an endangered flower, but it was at one point in time in this town.
Hope you're talking to conservation.
Every seven years is the only time that they flower. So it's a very rare plant.
Hmm.
So I would be very interested to see what, what they have to say, what conservation has to say.
I haven't seen those in years.
They're very rare. I've seen them in one other property, that was my grandparents' property, in the corner of Seventh Street and Pine, way down by the river down there. So I purposely went down there.
Put some fertilizer on.
Trying, trying to make my lawn look nice, and actually stopped mowing myself.
What we're trying to do with this, yeah, what we're trying to do with this twenty acres is, is, is make it so it fits in with the town. I don't wanna do anything that's gonna hit this whole area. So I'd rather just get the two lots out of here and just end it. Because up to back here, I've got a lot of land in the back there that I can build on, and I don't, I really don't wanna come in developing and putting in all kinds of stuff. I just want two lots and I wanna get out of there.
I think, uh, I think the neighbors would be glad to see.
Yeah. Yeah.
A final settlement on that property.
Then you only get two lots, and then, ma'am, you were talking about your well. We have to be at least a hundred feet from a leaching field, so we're probably gonna be four, five hundred feet away from your well with the septic system.
With the septic system, yes, but.
Right, I'm more.
We're gonna have car traffic, y- you can't tell me that.
Car traffic?
Every car that comes through town, you're gonna tell me is perfectly sealed up, doesn't leak anything? Now, we've got somebody driving up back and forth there, guy's got an old beater, stripping oil, that's making it down. My well is right next to that, that driveway. Now, it'd be like me taking my old beat up pickup truck and driving it up and down there. I take the old beat up pickup truck, leave it on the driveway with a tin underneath it to catch such things.
Yeah.
Now, if you've got a gentleman that's not as savvy as myself, driving back and forth every day from work, right?
I know with the septic.
Rainwater comes down, goes down into my well.
Septic system, you have to be a hundred feet away from our well, your well, anybody's well. Uh, and if, your, your, your well is on your property, and I'm not building anything within a hundred feet of your well. I don't see how your well's gonna be contaminated. I mean, if somebody, if you spill a little bit of gas on your property, you think it's gonna go into your well? Or if you drive your truck on your property and oil leaks out, you think it's gonna go on your well?
It's on asphalt, and I actually cleaned mine up.
I, I don't, I don't think that's how it'll affect it, you can, all wells are supposed to, they're drilled, they're supposed to be well sealed.
I have an Artesian.
Yeah, exactly, so it's, it's a sealed system. What they do is, they put a, a metal casy into it, they seal that real good, and then from that point on, it just, well, it doesn't work. That really, I've never heard of anything either, from another case like that, so. And I'm not.
That I wanted to bring up, yeah.
Okay, anybody else? I think we're ready to continue.
Alright, I'll get in touch with conservation, I'll get back to the engineers.
Check with the fire chief too, on the turnaround.
I will.
Okay.
He has to.
Yeah. Yep.
What do you think, a month?
Oh, be listen, I, I'll have this back to you hopefully in a week or so. We won't be back for a month, right?
No. No, we'll be back in three weeks, September fifth.
September fifth?
Yes.
September fifth.
Yeah, we'll be ready, we'll be ready.
Yeah, they give you three weeks.
Yeah, we'll be ready.
So would anyone like, one like to make a motion to continue this public hearing?
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing until.
September fifth.
September fifth.
Our second, uh.
Our favor?
Alright.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Okay.
Nice seeing you, Brett.
Good seeing you, Brett.
Good seeing you too.
I haven't seen you in a while.
It's been a while.
Uh, if you paint that, I would have, I didn't recognize you there for a while.
Don't worry, something's gonna kill you, but that won't be gasoline.
I thought it was Osama coming in for a while.
Okay, next, the next item on the agenda is a signed minor modification decision, I see there is.
So I've not been able to prepare the modification yet, so just wait for the plans to come back, um, from. Mr. Dunn, thank you. Um, so, we have no action on that one, but Attorney Zajac is here to discuss.
The next item.
The continuation of their Cedar Estates request into Wellington.
Yes.
Yes, right.
Correct. But anyway.
Good evening.
Uh, Mr. Dunn is not able to be here this evening. Uh, not only does he not have a plan, but he's on vacation, so. I'm here to, uh, see you and talk about the transition from Cedar into Wellington. Um, probably both with regard to the former Cedar cul-de-sac, which is now part of the roadway that leads into Wellington, as well as, um, tying to the sidewalks. So, I know that the, by the way, good evening, and John Zajac for, for Wellington sneakers. The, uh, the last time we were here, I think the board didn't have the, uh, the plans and the, um, permits in front of them for Wellington, so that we could also talk about how that tied in. And there might have been some question as to what the sidewalks might have been approved for Wellington compared to now making sure that they're compatible with what the board voted on for Cedar at the last meeting. So, um, do you wanna start with the transition and the Jersey barriers, or do you wanna start with the, uh, with the sidewalks?
Well, do we have any further information on the Wellington acres?
No, I haven't received anything, any updated proposed.
Do we have the old plan?
Yes, not save the day.
Carrie saves the day.
It wasn't me, it was Matt, it was Matt, I give Matt all that credit. This is the Wellington, right?
Yes.
And this part here. And that's what we're trying to fix, is this part to make it continue up, correct?
Yes.
That is my understanding. Matt, you might be able to help out, is it one of these?
Yeah, keep, uh, it's right there on your, on your left.
Over there, right there. So right now, you're saying there's Jersey barriers around the middle of that cul-de-sac where Tommy's Way ends?
Correct, we had a, the ultimate plan was to put in a roundabout.
Right.
Um, which is what we had shown on the plans, we just have not done that yet because of the probably part of the final road construction as well. So, um, the goal, the purpose it is, is that the Jersey barriers will still serve the same purpose, which was to slow down the traffic and give them, you know, what the, what the feel is gonna be like when the, uh, roundabout is put in. And that's still the, as far as the applicant's concerned, what their, what their plan is to do is to put in the, the roundabout as shown on the plans.
Yeah, we discussed that last time, so you, the plan is to put a roundabout there?
Yes, okay. Still the applicant's idea unless the board had something different in mind, but that's.
I like the idea, but I don't think our, for plowing purposes, our highway super.
I think you're still. What is the roundabout, you're gonna extend the vegetated island that's there now to a lollipop, is that what you're saying?
Um, it's, well. I mean, it was, it was originally designed as a cul-de-sac before we.
This is the issue right here.
Correct, right, this vegetated island that's there now, would you extend it out so the traffic wouldn't flow this way?
What are you saying, extend this through?
Yep. And, well, I'm asking if that, what they propose.
I think we could do either, I don't think we have a strong feeling either way. So if you wanted us to show it the other way, can you think that would be?
That's actually a good idea, keeps the traffic where it belongs to.
Absolutely, and there's, well, the problem is it's gonna have, it's gonna make the traffic always have to go in there. If somebody wanted to get here and turn around, they won't be able to do that. But at the same point, I think this is gonna be a huge issue in the future for plowing and for any kind of, you know, heavy vehicles going in and out of this, this thing here. This is a very sharp curve. I mean, am I wrong, Tom?
Yeah, it's gonna create a feel a lot sharper if that was to happen.
We have no way of cutting this back here.
Nope.
That's already a solved lot.
Right, those are, those are lots that belong to homeowners now.
Now, if we turn this into the two lanes to here, does that change the frontage of these folks? In other words, do they become non-conforming because of the, the radius is gone? Or is the radius remain on paper? I mean, I, I don't know, I'm just asking the question.
Are you, are you saying to come across this?
Yeah, yeah, right.
This way, I like that too.
Which, again, that makes sense for a lot of safety reasons, but. Matt, do you know anything?
Oh, give this extra property to these people.
Yeah, yeah.
Unless you change, I think unless you change the actual property lines.
What I was thinking now is.
So.
Whether you put in.
These people are with to take a section of land here and take away here.
Right, if you, so you're saying if you straighten that out, do they, because it's not, it's no longer radius, it's a straight line, do they lose frontage that might make it a, a non-compliant lot?
Actually, the frontage, there would gain frontage, huh?
No, 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 no.
Lot lines stay the same.
The lot lines are gonna stay the same.
If the lot line stays the same, then, then these two curves in this essence become pieces of paper road. Is that what they'd be called? I mean, for the sake of legality.
Yeah, it's basically, it's within the roadway layout whether you build it.
Whether we do it, yeah.
But that could be needed over to the, to the, those lots.
No, no, you wouldn't, you.
Just leave it.
Just leave it, if you need it over, then all of a sudden they become non-conforming.
Potentially creates the problem.
Right.
I mean, you could measure it and determine if they became non-conforming. You could give it to them, but it didn't.
Well, let's see, this curve here versus that, it might not matter, it might just, it, I mean, you'd have to have somebody look at it with a.
Who's maintaining those vegetated islands afterwards?
Well, those are gonna be part of the people's properties for all intents and purposes.
No, these, these islands.
The island, no, no, we're getting rid of the island, right?
Well, yeah, that's the idea.
We can't get rid of this.
Not at this point.
Who, who's taking care of that afterwards?
Oh.
But I think ultimately the homeowners association. There's already an association in place because of the, uh, shared sector too. So it wouldn't be a much.
That's, yeah, only for this island only, their work would probably stop at that line, right? Because that's a separate.
But that's if, that's if the whole, the decision becomes that the island is gonna remain if, if we're.
Well, no, it, it kinda matters. The, if these guys are taking care, they're gonna stop at that line. The maintenance, most of the maintenance is probably to maintain the vegetation. So having a roundabout with the asphalt, if, if you want that breakage here, you know what I'm saying? These, these people are not gonna mow the grass over there.
Oh, absolutely not.
Whether you have this or don't have it, that curve is still there. You still have to go around that.
You, you guys need that island so there's two egresses of the cul-de-sac, right? That was part of the original conception of the project, right?
This bit here.
Yeah, have it two egresses, right.
What if those come here? Cut that right out.
And lose, lose that round one?
Yeah, just lose this round. Then it'd be a continuance of the, the road, that's.
Well, that, that would be bad, right? You guys wouldn't allow, could you be beyond, you have five hundred feet?
Well, the issue I think is to go from this road here with, to two road, one to two, with the roundabout, it kinda solves the, the different sizes.
I'm sure of, of. It has to be a roundabout.
Civil engineer could do, but, could make it look better, but when all is said and done, you have one road that is one road and then one road that is two roads and it becomes kind of a funnel without that roundabout. With the roundabout, it solves the problem of the of the, of the different roadway widths.
Have you plowed that at all this past winter? I mean.
Since, since G. Loops, Stravola, both of them, they're, as far as emergency plowing or not, I'm not in that development. They're always on top of it. They don't pull around.
My, my, my concern is the plowing there, that's a, that's a huge, huge thing. I, I drove in there one day and that, that's a very tight curve.
As far as plowing, especially during the storm, we could probably just leave the foul between the roundabout and the vegetated island. You know, there'll just be a, a foul there and then as the end of the storm, that can be removed. All that, it's a blizzard.
But if there's a good amount of snow in there, you're gonna have a hard time pushing that with regular trucks. It'll, it'll most likely have to go into front end loaders.
Would, um, would, would making the roundabout a little bit smaller decrease the, you know, the, the extremity of that turn and still serve the same purpose?
Think about. Is a smaller roundabout better for you or worse for you?
It's worse.
I would, a smaller center island.
Yeah, because of the radius of a turn of a vehicle, you won't be able to touch it.
I used to plow a roundabout and it, it's kinda tricky. You gotta go one way and then you gotta go back the other way to, to clear the whole road. I used to do a private road in Berkeley, which the town of Berkeley wouldn't do, so I plowed that road. And at the end, it was a roundabout.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, it's not easy, you know, you're trying to push the snow and you gotta go back the other way too. So it's time consuming.
It, it probably, what we see in that here could probably work. There is no place in the whole development for miscellaneous parking either, because everything's so narrow and you might have it here, you know, for casual parking. Leave the asphalt the way it is, you know.
You think going from here to here to reduce that would affect the frontage? This is only, the only way we, the only way we're talking about.
Yes, it, yes, it. Especially if the.
From there to there, right?
What scale is that? Forty feet is one inch.
Wait, wait.
That's probably.
Twenty-six, twenty-eight?
No, it's moving now. Look, the lots is here, I'm gonna put them on. Uh, so it's three quarters of an inch, uh, three quarters of an inch.
Thirty, thirty feet, yeah. So it's probably was a hundred at one point.
You?
So that, that existing radius, we can, to be in that hundred foot radius, we can, you know, we can handle that. That, that could work, it's, it's just gonna look hard.
What if that was taken out and just put some kinda thing right in the middle there, just the statue or something like that? Get rid of that. Get picture of me in front of them.
You're gonna need it.
Let's get you.
Well, these, these guys, knowing these guys, there'll probably be a tree there, at least one.
Island rocks.
A big boulder. Would probably be the safest.
You've got a lot of them, right?
I got, yeah, I'll give it, I'll donate some. I don't think Loops needs that either.
I don't think we might.
We could probably find some.
Yeah.
I think what we're, we're looking to do, if we can reduce this radius without affecting the frontage of that lot.
Yeah, to me, that would be the ideal way to go.
And, and if we find a way to do that, what, what are you thinking for the roundabout problems?
Well, I, I think the roundabout's a great idea, but.
The original concept, that, I think Matt was here for that discussion, the original one, if that was part of traffic dampening.
I think you're right, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so there's not much you can do about it.
There's gonna be something to keep the traffic flow.
You, you touching that radius you alluded to, you're, you're taking away the traffic dampening.
Taking away the what?
The traffic dampening, they need to slow down to take that turn.
Slow down, yeah.
They need to have that. They have, it's, it's wide enough to get the combination vehicles through, tractor trailers, buses and stuff like that. They can still do it, everyone needs to slow down to use that area. You, you forced, you don't have a choice, you forced it.
And that's my reason for a nice big boulder right in the middle of this whole thing here.
Yep. Takes less water, you know? Takes less water than a tree.
Yeah, the pile of rocks.
Less maintenance.
Yep.
Remember Elm Street and Hart Street before they, there was just one big wide open area, right?
Yeah. So, I, I think we're good with that transition. It kinda ties in with this, the sidewalk, which is the next discussion. Cause the side, the sidewalk's gonna get moved, right, it's still on that west side?
Yes. Although we don't even plan that still, what we intend to do.
You thought the plan that had the sidewalk from the old subdivision going on the other side of the road?
I think the last time we were here, we, the sidewalk wasn't gonna be on that same side. That's my recollection at least, that the sidewalk would have been on this side of the, of the roadway there.
Right, so then how do you get from one side of the road, the sidewalk on? You know, sidewalks on this side.
Very carefully.
This is.
Yeah, is this the sidewalk?
Yeah.
So you're saying the one on Cedar is on the other side?
I, I thought the one that they had proposed, you put it on the other side of the, of the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
It is. Has what's shown on the plan there.
I still don't know what we agreed to, right?
Well, I haven't seen the revised plans.
I think we just couldn't talk about this one last week because it wasn't on these day there. Previous page brings us to the three-way star bridge.
Yeah.
This whole, this whole.
That's all, like.
This is what you're saying is way on. Yeah, this one you bought.
So the, on Cedar, one of the reasons why you required the roundabout to stay was because of the mailboxes. So the mailboxes are on this side. Yeah, because if the, if the driver he's. Trying to pick up a mail truck.
So if there was a crosswalk there.
Don't, then it would be on the right.
Well, I think what, what I mean is that they're trying to figure out if there's, they have.
Right hand.
Stop signs too, right?
Well, but then they can drive in.
Already there?
Oh. Yeah. Doesn't really matter for the mailbox road. I think the other reason was so that when the snow is pushed, there's a space to put the snow instead of.
On the sidewalk, there is another thing.
Telephone poles going around, so whatever, you get to the cul-de-sac, you're gonna be on the opposite side.
I don't think so.
So somewhere, they'd need another crosswalk to get to the, the north side of Wellington Acres.
What's the name of that street, Cedar?
Probably.
What?
The, with the.
No, because when you get, when you take this sidewalk all the way down to the cul-de-sac. The sidewalk in Wellington Acres is on the opposite side actually.
Right.
So.
So here's the sidewalk.
Here's one getting there.
So.
That just crosses the street.
You.
There's no sidewalk or no sidewalk here.
Right, until you hit the cul-de-sac.
Right, so somewhere between here and here, you've gotta put a crosswalk and extend the sidewalk. Cause on this plan, it shows the existing sidewalk that doesn't exist because it's not gonna be on this side. So probably before, this is, this section here is not as planned. So somewhere between where, I'm just using my finger, somewhere here where this sidewalk goes here, you have to get across and go to here. Now, do you take this sidewalk and go all the way to here and then put a crosswalk across here? Or the smarter thing in my opinion is to have the crosswalk here and go here. But again, it's just a matter of marrying the two, two subdivisions into a cohesive whole.
I mean, e- even though it's not, show me any plans, yeah, would it make more sense to just put two crosswalks there and start the sidewalk
Yeah.
on this side and then just continue into Wellington?
Yeah, that would be the.
Especially if you're gonna have two stop signs, there are no stop signs.
Sidewalk over here, yeah.
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 And not on this side?
No, cause that would be, that'd be their access or whatever. Oh, okay, have to get on this way.
Right, right.
And you don't wanna cross them by the roundabout anymore.
No, then you, then you've got your crosswalks where there's a stop sign.
And the intersections there, there's a stop sign there, it's a safer place to cross.
That makes perfect sense.
Yeah. It'll be written.
See, we didn't give a name.
That's why you get paid to defend.
Sweet thing, this one's not quite good.
No, no sidewalks are out there yet.
Right, right, we can, we can still change it.
You're not in Sunny's Way yet either, I mean.
No, no. In fact, that's the other reason that we wanted to come back tonight to make sure that I, I think the last time we were here, no one was sure exactly what the approval width of the sidewalk was. And we wanted to make sure that they were gonna be exactly the same so that there wasn't some awkward transition, so. And now we're not really talking about a transition, but we're still looking to do the same sidewalks just for consistency in, in both subdivisions.
We don't know if they approved one or two for Wellington Acres, right?
I think one or two.
Side one?
Oh, there's one shown here.
There's only one side.
Yeah, we, we were just concerned about the width. I think when we were here before, no one was completely sure what the width was and we wanted to make sure that the width was gonna be the same as what had been approved by the board for, for Tommy's Way.
Do you remember the width?
Uh, I know it was two feet of grass and four feet of sidewalk.
Something like that, sounds good.
I'm sure it's in the notes, but.
We know the two feet of grass, we got that.
I, we, yeah, yes.
Grass strip four foot sidewalk.
Four foot side and out there. And, and this did, I, I, that's probably what this shows, it's definitely a four foot sidewalk. Try and see if there's a dimension.
That's an eighth of an inch, that's four feet.
It's strange, it's, it's, here it's very narrow and there it's.
So.
With the grass, it's having a consistent.
That's paper.
Yeah.
So, so Matt.
Hot grass.
So we all understand, so coming up with no sidewalk on this side, no sidewalk all the way to here.
Mm-hmm, correct.
But this other sidewalk's gonna come around, wrap all the way around and end here.
With a cross there.
With a crosswalk.
Yes. Which kinda makes sense, because that, there's gonna be stuff like.
Yeah, no, I mean, that, I mean.
There gonna be a stop sign here somewhere?
Uh, we should.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would, that would work.
And have no sidewalk from here to Billy's Way.
Right.
On the side.
Right, on the. Cause that's, that's also the side you have your hydrants down there too.
On this side.
On that side of the road.
You're not gonna walk down the street anyway.
Yeah. Yeah.
Tagging some sidewalk, right? I think that works. And it's asphalt.
Did we help you?
Yeah, I know, I, I, I think you did. I think this, I, I think it makes sense to, to tie it in that way, the cross at the Tommy and Billy's intersection. And then come up this side around to.
And a crosswalk there.
Right.
What do those lots have?
What do you suggest?
One seventy-five.
Frontage?
Yeah.
No.
Be my elected seventy.
Oh, that was a conservation, right?
Um.
Maybe even less than seven.
Or the burn, maybe?
Yeah.
I mean, I thought we had.
It's a conservation.
Oh.
It's a roundabout. There's no possibility of be riding something, it's, it's, you know, be bringing things either, I don't know.
The Emaulepisc is probably the most forgiving for us.
That's what I'm doing.
I mean, that's what I think has gotta brew, and I don't think you wanna go away from, from one over the other. It can be, this will be done. Last house is being built, right?
Okay.
Yeah, we're just about done.
Sidewalk.
Yes.
Quarters of not less than fifty. You were right, Joe. So all they need is fifty feet quarts.
Okay.
That's on that subdivision.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's part of the old ones, yeah, it's a standard, one seventy-five.
This one is one seventy-five.
So over here, we need one seventy-five, we'll cut that and still keep one seventy-five.
Tom would be happy.
Tom is always happy, look, he's always got that smile on him, you know?
Do, I don't think we have to make any motions or anything, do we?
I don't think at this point.
This point?
No, you're gonna probably want us to.
Part of that.
Come back with a new plan. I think maybe we have to vote on whether this is a minor modification, or maybe, I guess we'll vote the next time when we have an actual modification before us, cause now we're just talking about modifications. When we see it on the plan, then we'll vote on it.
So there's no changes to Wellington Acres at all?
No.
It's all, or Cedar Estates?
Well, we did wanna clarify the width of the, uh, of the sidewalk, are we just gonna keep the sidewalk the same as we're doing in Tommy's or?
Um.
That's, that's what we think, so, yeah.
It was Tommy's Way.
That's what we had voted the last time, yeah, we would continue that.
Yeah. Three or four feet, right?
Right.
Four feet.
Okay, four, four and two.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the trees are gonna be planted.
Right.
Always inside from there.
Although this script shows a lot more than two.
It does, and we'd like to keep it consistent, I don't know why they widened it.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's because when you get to that intersection, there's, the road gets a lot wider, and you have it narrow, stuff together.
It's only gonna be that much more. Mm-hmm.
Oh, right, right here.
Yeah.
Cause over here, it gets wider still.
I think, you know, I don't think it is actually on the ground though, cause it feels, it feels different than what you see there.
That's, especially, that's the other thing too, it doesn't seem like you've got all that much space.
So if it's, if, if it's no less than two feet, I think we'll be happy.
Okay.
No less than two.
No less than two feet. So that if over here, for some curve reason, you have to make it two and a half feet, that's okay, but if over here, you gotta make it one feet six inches, not okay.
Okay.
No less than two feet.
Okay.
All right.
We're good?
Any comments at all from anyone? Audience? Okay, we're good.
Joe's side.
All right.
So I, I, just to clarify, we're gonna come back with revised plans
Mm-hmm.
for them to act on, and I'm assuming it's gonna be both for Cedar and Wellington, correct?
Yes.
Because, and then we can do our vote?
Right, cause we're.
Yes, we'll have the two separate votes, three separate subdivisions.
Okay.
And as long as the plans are consistent as we've discussed, it should be a breeze.
Should be, okay.
All right, sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
That was pretty easy.
Do you anticipate on being here for the next meeting? Or do you wanna wait and talk to Mr. Gunn?
Let me, let me, yeah, just, just as soon as we have to draw the plans, right?
Okay. Okay, so our next, our September meeting is September fifth and September.
Just give it a show up in a seat.
Show up.
And that's Carrie.
No, that's Carrie, it's ours now.
Nineteenth.
But as soon as he gets back from vacation, I'll find out what he thinks is the most realistic, okay? And I know, I know the fifth is a little bit packed, but.
It is packed, so keep that in mind, um, so, yeah.
So we're, yeah, that's good. Okay.
And I'm sure I'll touch base with you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
So that is the last item on the agenda as written, but are you folks here for a particular reason?
Yes, I'd like to ask you a simple question.
Okay.
Um, my name's Ray Shaw, I have property on Maple Street, and we're in the process of trying to carve off a half, half of that property and sell it. And I've gone through the process of first right of refusal, I sent that to the town. I got a, um, a call back about three weeks after that saying that I also had to submit a plan for how we were gonna divide that property. And also a, um, a Form A application. So this morning I came in, I saw Carrie, and we were trying to fill out this Form A application, and the question of present zoning came up. And right now, this is the property in question. And this is how we intend to carve it, just straight carve, right?
So this is the property as it, as we speak?
As it, as it speak, as it speak.
Okay.
And this part here is gonna be sold, this part's gonna be retained, all of this is now in chapter.
Sixty-one A.
Sixty-one A. My intention is to keep this in sixty-one A, and I think this may be part of the reason why we're having a problem here, but I don't know. Um, but the other problem is, my understanding is part of this is recreational and part of it's residential. And Carrie's question is on the form here, do we put residential or do we put recreational?
Which part is recreational and which part is residential?
This line defines residential, this is all of residential.
Okay.
And this defines recreation. And we, this property's been in our family, I think, since the nineteen twenties. And to my knowledge, nobody knows, nobody in the family knows when this was divided into recreational and residential. We'd love to know when that happened, how that happened, who in our family was apprised of the fact that it happened, it's going to happen.
Of the recreational.
I don't even have a.
And, well, one of the questions, because I did look it up when he and I were sitting down over it, and it does state that under the use regulation schedule for residential uses, under open space and recreation, you cannot have a single-family dwelling. But part of the issue is from the discussions that we had was the line for recreational was this way, the line for residential was this way, and he was stating that the individual interested wanted to build a house in the residential part. Where it's kind of a, I, yeah, it, I'm seeing this as a unique situation, and I didn't know how to direct him, so I suggested.
But he wants to do just the recreational for his own recreation, he doesn't wanna do anything else, he just wants to do it.
From our perspective, the planning board, we are approving a subdivision and nothing else, whether it's buildable or not buildable, or single-family, or industrial, or whatever. It's just a Form A for all intents and purposes. So in terms of what you should put on that, you should put both, recreational slash single-family.
Okay.
Because it's both, I don't know any other way to do it.
Right.
And then, when you sub, or perhaps before you subdivide, you may wanna get a legal opinion, opinion about whether this residential is buildable. Now, as a non-attorney, common sense says it's residential, you can build in it.
I mean.
It's residential, you can't build here, looks like it's wetlands anyway.
Mm-hmm, yeah, beyond here it is.
So, this is the upland area right here?
Yes.
So, it seems to me that you're, you're in a good position, but I wouldn't do any subdividing if, if I were the owner until I got a legal opinion as to whether I'm blowing smoke at you or telling you what is actually in fact legal.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Looks like there's enough room for.
But it seems that this is twenty-five acres, that's plenty of land.
Yeah, that's, that was.
Yeah.
You can stay, stay out of the, out of the buffer, and now this one,
Yeah.
this little corner is, is the upland in this lot, right here?
Yes.
And so, oh, and, and here. Oh, I see, so this is the wetland. So, again, it, it, it may, you may wanna get a legal opinion, or go to the zoning board of appeals, ask them of their opinion before you pay money to an attorney, because if, if the ZBA is of the opinion that you need a variance to build in a split zone, then they may, they may know better than me, cause of what, what we're talking about, it's, it's split zoning.
Okay.
So, I don't know.
And the zoning people.
But if he can get his house in Septic.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be within everything.
It shouldn't be an issue at all.
No.
But before you do anything, just confirm it with someone other than us, cause again, our, uh, purview is to either approve or deny, and it's clear that, that this is a, these lots both conform to Form A, approval not acquired.
Doesn't mean they're buildable.
Doesn't mean they're buildable, so, you should, cause if, if, if you're looking for two buildable lots, you may wanna move this over ten feet, you may wanna, I don't, I don't know, I mean, that's, that's something to ask somebody more knowledgeable about, about zoning than me.
So those are, that's the zoning people, and they probably have the answer as to when this took place.
Uh, no, the planning board, the planning board proposes zoning changes, but I don't think anyone knew what was going on in the twenties, anybody here Methuselah or?
Cause Tom, your engineer will have to determine whether or not you can get a house in Septic in there.
But we can approve the plan or disapprove it, yeah. As we said, we approve it, and then it's for other people to make this decision.
Okay.
Whether or not it's gonna be buildable.
You might even talk to the building inspector, he's also our zoning enforcement officer, he'd be a good.
Yeah, he's a trend, so.
He's the guy to talk to first. Uh, Jim Agar, the zoning enforcement officer can, if he can't give you a better, a more definitive opinion, he can point you in a, in a better direction than I just did.
Okay.
That, that's a lot cheaper than an attorney at any rate.
All right, that's great. One other question, maybe you don't have the answer. Since the town hasn't decided whether they wanna buy this parcel or not, why are we spending money doing a Form A application? Because if the town decides to buy this, then it's a whole different scenario.
Um, the town doesn't, th- there is no reason for the town to act on anything until there's a signed purchase and sale agreement.
And we've got all of that, it's been submitted to the town.
And has, and has not come before this board, because the board has to make a recommendation to the.
No, we were told by Mallory, um, to bring in a plan.
Yep.
And do, and do a Form A application.
Yep.
And she would, she would distribute that to all, all the.
Didn't we act on the sixty-one A already?
Until, until that long application fee to the town, just as.
I thought we did.
The town's not gonna buy it.
That's the one?
No. Just so you know.
We're not gonna buy it.
We did not act on it because we wanted to divide it for us, right?
Think it's schools to pay for.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not gonna buy it, I mean, I don't know what you're asking for it, but we can afford it, so.
That's probably good news.
We're gonna pay for modular, modular schools.
I'm just one, I'm just wondering why we're doing a Form A if the town hasn't.
Even if they were to buy it, they'd have to pay you fair market value.
Yeah, so.
That's the way the law's written.
So, so.
And if you don't like the offer they offer you.
No, we have to match, we have to match your purchase and sale agreement, so either way, you're gonna get your money, assuming that it's buildable.
This one would be more desirable for the town, cause the wall field's over here.
Right, yeah.
So how you been?
Good, how are you?
Doing well, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Ray donated some property to us up off of, uh, Oak?
Oak Street, yeah.
Oak Street, yeah, a little bit of property owned to access our sixty some acres of landlocked property, so.
Good.
We appreciate that, still.
Looking forward to seeing the.
We haven't done anything yet.
Your town park.
I, I'd like to say a wounded warrior's village.
That'd be great, yeah.
But.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Thank you.
Not sure we helped you, but.
And should I move forward with this?
Well, I, I think you should, um, speak to, well.
Jim.
I'd speak to Jim and ZBA first.
Jim first, Jim, he may be the only person I have to speak to.
Talk to Jim first. Yeah.
Jim, what's his name?
Agar.
Jim Agar, and he's actually at the top of the, the hill over there at the old range hall, so he's moved over there.
Agar. Okay. Okay.
I know, I think the week of September fifth, he's going on vacation, but I do believe he'll be here tomorrow.
Okay.
So it might be in your best interest to get over there and speak to him, and ZBA's actually in that building as well.
And water health too, so he can give you all the wetland requirements and.
And all that.
So can Jim, bro.
Tom.
Lot of information over there.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hey.
Yes, you can have that one.
Thank you.
All right, good night.
Take care, Ray, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Was, um, Broad Street Extension, uh, sold, people coming in to see you guys?
Not tonight.
September fifth.
September fifth.
September fifth.
All right, okay.
So you, you're with Conservation, correct?
Yeah.
So, I, I think they.
Well, I'm not rel, I am, but I'm not relative.
You am, but you're not.
Well, no, I mean, I have to re-shoes myself because I have property that a buck's hat, so.
Okay. Um, so they met with Conservation last week?
Yeah, they met with Conservation, and I didn't really like some of the questions they brought up.
Okay, Conservation or?
The people, Conservation plus the people that were there.
Okay. Okay. So, um, I'm hoping that Conservation will be submitting to the planning board what the results were from that?
I would imagine, but, uh, our meeting isn't till the twelfth, so whatever, you know, they went over, you people will be getting, but.
Okay.
Like I say, some of it I wasn't too happy with, but I couldn't say too much, but.
Okay.
And I just wondered if they had come before you, so.
Nope, September fifth, they have, um, they are posted for.
Well, he had said something about he had to meet with you.
What's that?
Uh, their engineer or whatever said they were supposed to meet with you people.
Jack, I think.
Well, you were open.
He didn't, he didn't say, you know, maybe I misunderstood him, but.
You can recuse, I don't know if you did it, but you can recuse yourself from, as a board member, but as a, uh, butter, you can still sit out there.
Well, I, I realize that, Tom, but, like I say, some of my own members, I don't like what they had to say
Okay.
against it, you know what I'm saying, so I just kinda let it lay, and I wanna see what you people have to say about it before I either blow off steam or go along with it, so.
Well, depends on public input, I suppose.
Yeah, no, it does, and like I say, even some of the public input, you know what I mean? Like, find out what's going on first, or make a fool of yourself, you know what I'm saying? And, uh, you know, there's an abandoned town road between this, so they can say what they want, but.
When it's an abandoned town road?
I don't know how that works, Joe, really, you know what I'm saying? But I don't see, if there's an abandoned town road, whether it's thirty, forty, or fifty feet, I don't see how, you know what I mean? The, the people that are doing the project, uh, they can be liable for an abandoned town road.
The layout of the road is fifty feet.
I don't, I don't know, I mean, is it?
It is, yeah. And when the road was abandoned.
Yeah.
Half goes to one side, half goes to the other side. He needs twenty feet access to get into the.
Yeah.
Project, so.
But don't blame it all on him, they're not even there yet. You got problems now and they're not there, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
You worry about trees being cut, I can remember when he was planting tomatoes there, so.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, like I said.
That was a farmer once, huh? You found that?
No, Andrew's did.
Oh.
Andrew's farmer, but, I mean, right around the corner.
Yeah.
You know, that whole place.